Good evening. We call this meeting to order. We'll have our invocation by Councilmember Brubaker followed by the pledge to the flag. So please stand as you are able.
Tonight, and as the future unfolds before us, let us seek wisdom without pride. Maintain strength buffered by compassion. Provide opportunity accompanied with dignity. Appreciate beauty but find it in the ordinary. Exhibit both wide perspective and narrow focus. Be humble in achievement and resilient in disappointment. And always, always, attempt understanding. And if that first grasp tries, if that first grasp fails, try again, try again, try again.
When we begin to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Some announcements. We'll be following the rules of procedure adopted September 24th, 2013. Use of cell phones during meetings is restricted. All correspondence for distribution to elected officials should be provided to the city clerk and should include a copy for the city clerk for inclusion in the official record. Our meeting schedule, we will not be meeting on Tuesday, February 3rd. So that's a change from what's on the agenda. There will be no work session on February 3rd. We will have a work session on February 10th at 4:00 PM. Also, a work session on February 17th at 4:00 PM. And then a work session for a mid-year budget report at 5:00 PM on the 24th, followed by our regular session that same evening at 7:00 PM. We do have several appointments on the agenda. Two for the Board of Zoning Appeals, George C. Newman III and James D. Stalfour Jr., with various times for their term to expire. Can I get a motion?
No move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Or I'm sorry, any discussion on the motion? This would be for all the appointments, Mr. Councilmember?
That was my intention. That would include for the Board of Zoning Appeals, George Newman, James D. Stalfour, and for the Hagerstown Loan Review Authority, Marshall Hammer and Louis Watson. I believe Mayor of the City Ethics Commission, the post is yours alone to make, although I'm sure the council would approve it and endorse it.
Okay, so the motion is for the appointments to the VZA and the Hagerstown Loan Review Authority. Any other discussion on the motion?
Just to clarify for the terms as specified in the meeting.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries and the appointments will be made. We have a couple of special guests here tonight. They've received a lot of press recently, but we wanted to bring them before the mayor and council and formally recognize their lifesaving actions. This is a special recognition for lifesaving efforts. Officer Langley Dean and Officer John Mullino. I'd like to have them come forward along with the chief and... Because I know they are humble heroes, I'm just gonna have Chief Holtzman say a few words about them. And thank you, thank you very much for being here. Chief?
Thank you.
I think we're gonna look at that camera over there if you don't know.
All right, well, we'll wing it. We'll wing it. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, council, for having Officers Dean and Mullino down here today. I've been kidding them back here that this has kind of become routine for these two individuals. Both of them, this is not their first lifesaving award and not their last. About 10 days after this one happened, Officer Dean had another one. He quietly, has been real quiet about that one, but he had another save just 10 days after this save. These two individuals, the city has a program. We partnered with our ambulance service and fire department and our 911 center. What we do is anytime there's a cardiac arrest or trouble breathing, a life-threatening incident like that, anywhere in the city, they simulcast what's called an echo call. It's their code call for a life-threatening call. These officers monitor all the police channels and then they heard that echo call. And if they're in the area, they go and see if they can make some effort to save a life. In many cases, it's CPR. In this case, they also use the AED and some other lifesaving measures to shock the person back. We did talk to the hospital staff on this one. They said without a doubt, the individual would not be alive if it wasn't for these two here. So this is, it's becoming routine for our department and, but I appreciate the council taking some, some time to just bring some attention to it. This is anything but routine. These guys, they're under a lot of stress when they handle these calls. You could imagine the situation. We even had a language barrier involved in this one. And these two officers cut right through all that and were able to save the life. So, thank you, gentlemen. And if I can, real quick, representation from, I think, every rank at the police department. We have both as shift sergeants, made the trip down here along with Lieutenant Fetchu and the operations captain, Tom Langson, are all here to support this effort. And all these gentlemen, they worked all day today too, so it's been quite a day for them. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks again, council. At this time, we will have citizen comments. Just a reminder to folks that citizen comments are limited to five minutes per individual. Meetings are televised and recorded. Your comments will be on air and on tape and on YouTube. We have one citizen who signed up to speak tonight, and that is Dot Klein. Dot, if you don't mind coming to the podium and state your name and address for the record, please. Are you Dot?
Pardon?
Are you Dot?
Yes.
Dot Klein? Please, come on up. It's your turn.
Oh, I was waiting for you to do everything else.
Well, we want to hear before, from you before we vote on anything, so.
I'm Dot McDonald Klein. I live on Benjamin Place. I'm here as a taxpayer and a concerned citizen. I also have a vested interest in Center City, the Maryland Theater, and the city park. In 1975, as a housewife, I asked to serve on the downtown development committee. I stayed involved in the downtown till about 1986. But a couple years after being on the committee, I decided if I was gonna do anything, I should get my real estate license, which I did. I would like to congratulate you. You're the first mayor and city council to get as far as you have. Nobody in the past has got this far. So, you must be working pretty hard. And I hate to have to disagree with you on some things, but at least I know you're working. This last meeting on December 11th was held at the library. I went to the meeting before that, but there was nobody in the library. They said there's no meeting by the city council. So I went upstairs and I asked up there. And they said the same thing. So I went home. And about a half an hour later, someone called me and said that there was a meeting. So I didn't get to that meeting, but I did get to this one on December 11th. And I had hoped that you were gonna put this in the newspaper. And the next morning, in the newspaper, it says, "Mayor Wants Sons More Engaged in the City." And I thought, you only spoke a few minutes on the sons. So he didn't really write what he should have written. So, that night at the meeting, I sat beside of Jake. So I went down to the Herald Mail and I talked with him. Well, no, it took me four or five days to catch him. And then, Tim Rowland, his 214 was a year with a plan. It was, sometimes his articles are very good and other times, you wonder where he is when he's writing these articles. So, well, let's see. My concern is that you're taking a city-owned parking lot and having, and wanting a developer to build a new modern office building. I think it's a dumb idea, but it's not quite as dumb as the idea that Hilton Smith had when he wanted to build a restaurant in the sky. He wanted to put this restaurant over the square. But everybody laughed about it and nothing ever happened, and I don't know what they would have done. I rode around the city the next day, and you have about 15 buildings that could be renovated into modern office space. And I don't understand why I wanna, yeah, I shouldn't say that. I do understand you don't have the money. That's why you're, you want to give up the city parking lot and you want to let a developer build. I don't, I think we should use the older buildings because when people come into town, they stay in a community longer if the downtown, the downtown, this downtown has a lot of historic meanings and a lot of the buildings have, they don't have to have anything done to the façades. So I think that you should concentrate a little more on using these buildings and looking for ways to find some other money. And there are other ways to find money. I went on a computer last night and ended up staying there too long. And I put in recent downtown renovations. It come up with several pages of renovations taking, happening across the country. And I think maybe some of you should read those articles. Coming out of the alley from the Washington County Playhouse, you have two buildings that sit right there on Franklin Street. They look like they've had a lot of work done on the outside. I don't know about the inside. You have a cream building across the street that has the blue, the blue trim and the wine awnings. And also, the building where the rhubarb restaurant is could have been used, but it seems like you gave that away. I think Center City is first. You can't build trails until you have Center City working. The other thing is housing for students. When I went to a reunion at Fort Hill up in Cumberland, one of the girls, one of the classmates told me they had three apartment buildings in Frostburg. They remodeled the buildings and they have students living in them. They had put washers and dryers in the apartments. They ended up taking them out and putting them in the basement because the students would let them run over. Anyhow, she said it was a lot of work. And I just think you need to give some more thought to the city getting involved with students. The other thing is, you have a resource here in Hagerstown and you haven't used it. Has it been two years? Is this your second year? Okay, the first year, Alshire made a comment about real estate agents. And then I didn't see anything else in the paper about it, and I didn't hear of any realtors doing anything for downtown. You know, realtors have investors. They have developers. They have contacts across the USA. And some of them are even connecting with foreign countries. Sid Machad had that building on the Downsfield Pike and the people from the foreign country bought it. And then when they ended up not doing anything, he put it up for sale again. So there is one realtor that has contacts in foreign countries. I think you need to send out invitations and you should have a luncheon for the real estate agents. Not a sandwich and a cookie, but a nice luncheon. Say your first luncheon would be at Bulls and Bears. Have about 30 agents. And this report here, you could show it to them, you could talk about it. And then you could give them a tour of the city or give them one of the brochures on the city. And get them involved in this downtown. They, they have the know-how to bring you investors and developers, and you don't use them. For some reason, I don't know why it is that you don't use real estate agents, but that's my idea to helping you get started a little sooner. And there is money out there. The Mary Kay Bowman has a fund for historical and fine arts. The Community Foundation has more than 31 million in assets. So there's someplace you could go. Plus, there's grants across the country that you could apply for. At the old library, I attended a seminar one day on writing for grants. And it was really mind-boggling to see all the places that you could send and ask for money. And that brings to mind the, when they built the Sierra Nevada buildings out there at the airport, I believe Dave Ryder got money from EDC and he also got bond money from the commissioners. And it was the same with Dr. Katari and his group. They built that nice building. They got money from EDC and they also went before the commissioners and got bond money. Now, I know they have to pay the bond money back. I don't know about the money from EDC. And like I said, there, there's a lot of funding out there. You just have to look for it. And I just hope that you will get the real estate agents involved in helping you because there's a lot of help out there from them. And if anybody can make downtown grow, they can. Back when I was serving, there just, there just wasn't a lot going on. And you got sort of disgusted. So I think you ought to, you ought to get them involved.
Thank you, Dot.
I thank you for your time.
Well, I just want to address a couple of the points that you made. First of all, thank you for your compliment that we're the first mayor and council to get as far as we have, because I do think we're laser-focused, although able to keep many balls up in the air. We are focused on executing that plan that we have for catalyst projects downtown. But I want to clarify, and also, I'm appreciative of the fact that you came to the community meeting and that you're engaged in getting, getting out to the city functions and giving us your feedback. I wish I could write the headlines for the Herald Mail, but unfortunately, I can't help it that they will take 30 seconds of something I said out of an hour and a half conversation with the community and put that on the headlines. I don't have any control over that. I'm sure you understand. But when it comes to building on the central lot, I know people like to say, "Well, that's a good parking lot that we have that, you know, the city owns. Why would we want to give that up?" I just want to remind folks, there used to be an office building there, and it was torn down in order to become a parking lot. So, let's not lose sight of what it used to be in terms of tax generating property. And you mentioned maybe 15 buildings around the town that could be converted into modern offices. And that's true. However, we don't own all of those properties. And so that's where the private sector and private developers come into play and real estate agents taking advantage of that market, if there is one, to either tear down or renovate old buildings. But I think the impetus that we have to get a developer, the incentive we have, is the fact that we already own the property and that we can help facilitate the development of that property, perhaps at a lower cost and with more ease than if it were located in some other part of the county. So I just wanted to clarify that. We don't, I, you know, sometimes people think city government, we can just wave a wand and make anything happen with any property. And I'm sure you understand, being in the real, real estate business, that that's, the city doesn't own or control all those properties, but we certainly want to encourage the development and redevelopment of different parts of town. And I will say about the grant money, certainly, I know for a fact, our, our staff at every departmental level is chasing down grant money left and right. And many of the projects that we undertake are funded by grant money, and we're very appreciative for the, the bodies that grant us that money and encourage our staff to continue to seek those grant funds. So thank you for your comments.
Mayor, may I follow up on that, please?
Sure.
Dot, it's good to see you. Thank you for being here. We appreciate the many things you have done for this community, especially your efforts to City Parks, City Park during the Segura administration, all those years ago. You've had one victory already. I recently had a conversation with one of our staff members, Andrew Sargent, who's our downtown manager. He fully concurs with you that the realtors have not been brought in to the city enough, our situation enough. We have not made use of them. And he has made that commitment, as well as other members of our staff has made that commitment, that in the spring, when it's warmer weather and there could be a walking tour, that your suggestion about having the realtors come together, do a luncheon, and then try to sell them on what's available in Hagerstown so they can get the word out, will be followed up. So, you've already had one victory. And you can watch out probably in April or May for that to happen. So thank you for being here.
Thanks. At this time, we'll have city administrator comments.
Just, just a few reminders on dates. Next Tuesday morning, February 3rd is the State of the County. I think mayor and council have all received emails and notifications of the State of the County. Tuesday, February 3rd. The annual Day in Annapolis with the local community coalition and other representatives of the community is next Wednesday, February 4th. I don't know, Councilmember Brubaker, you may want to offer more comments on that through your involvement with the, the coalition. That's February 4th. And then the State of the City is March 10th. That's Tuesday, March 10th, is the State of the City. That's it for me.
Okay, thank you. Onto mayor and council comments. How about we start with Ms. Ny and we'll work our way to the right.
I have nothing.
Okay, Mr. Metzen.
Nothing.
Mr. Metzen. Mr. Brubaker.
Well, I think I've talked previously about the, the Day in Annapolis, and I want to thank all those who, going forward, that plan to attend. Encourage the, anyone who wants to go down and help work with the various community groups that are down there. It's a coalition of the Board of Education, the city, the Chamber of Commerce, many other groups going down to try to lobby for such things as the Maryland Theater, the changing the liquor laws to accommodate festivals downtown, Interstate 81, the Eastern Boulevard Corridor, and many initiatives like that. Plus, we try to keep an eye on negative things that might be happening in Annapolis. But the day down there is to try to emphasize the positive things. So, I think for more detailed information or how you could help, you can contact the Chamber of Commerce, and they'll be glad to, to fill you in on, on how you could do that. So otherwise, I have no comments tonight, except to thank the staff as usual for doing a good job on, is it gonna snow? Is it not gonna snow? Is there enough? Is there not enough? I know it's a tough issue. A lot of standby time. When you've been in the military, you know that can be the most debilitating type of time at all.
Hurry up and wait.
Hurry up and wait.
Mr. Alshire?
Couple of items. The first is, if you've read your MML circular, you will see that it looks like the state is proposed to remove that additional funding for highway user revenues in next year's budget. And I would only note that, I think it was 2004, one of the goals that I had listed for the city was to remove itself from any dependency on that money because of the volatility of it, from administration to administration. And I think that that approach is, is a reflection of that. And again, I think an effort that would serve us better to simply just not count on that at all in our budget and, and accept it as sort of a bonus when it does occur. And I realize that that has implications for how we budget next year and in future years, but between that, and I think there's a marginal cut to, to state police aid. Those funds just, just never seem guaranteed, no matter how much more the state implements ways in which to increase that resource. And the second is, I attended a meeting of the Greater Hagerstown Downtown Task Force and we had some discussion on, on this block-by-block idea that I had pitched a year or so ago. And I think that it looks like they may have some interest in that, doing, doing some type of, at least pilot analysis of one block, just to see what that sort of ferrets out, which I'm appreciative of. I think that, that it would be good to do that. And I think that ties in with the meeting that I attended today between the Board of County Commissioners and the Economic Development Commission and sort of EDC, whatever, sort of what their strategic plan is. And it's more of an orientation for the commissioners to, to link sort of the similarities between their efforts and, and our efforts and to see where there are some commonalities. You know, I noted in that, as it applies to our downtown, the, the mutual focus between those efforts are clearly on four areas. One, education. The second being housing. And the third, employment. And the fourth, infrastructure. And speaking of infrastructure and housing, I will just, my last comment is to put in a bit of a plug, as folks now walk a good bit around town on a pretty regular basis from the south end to the north end. And we've had three, I guess, three measurable snow events. I would estimate that probably one out of four properties doesn't appear to ever get cleared. And it's usually the same properties. And we have a continued presence of code enforcement issues. And one of the remarks that I made at both of those meetings, that I think an average person notices when they walk, are just how apparent those deficiencies are. And if you think about the routes that you travel every day, if you were to get out and sort of walk that route once, you would say, "Oh, that's why I noticed these things." And then there's always, you know, very good things within those routes. But, you know, driving by repetitively, if you get out and walk that, it really points out some of those areas that, that I think need some address. And, you know, I think that we need to continue down that avenue of, of doing that with all properties.
Thanks. I, to recap my week, last Wednesday, I attended the inaugural ball for the new governor and lieutenant governor. It was a very nice event, a lot of different people there. And just wanted to go and represent the city of Hagerstown. And I am optimistic that we'll have, you know, a rebound in our economy, but with the, the new governor's latest budget, it looks like, once again, local government will be left holding the bag when it comes to cuts that will end up coming back on local governments to figure out ways to keep services going. But I, but I am looking forward to working with the new administration. But I am looking forward to working with the new administration and his staff at various state departments to try to continue to work on behalf of the citizens of Hagerstown. Also, last Thursday, the Barbara Ingram School for the Arts had a ribbon cutting for their writing department. It was a great event. There's some inspiring views that those students will have to write creatively, but I think it does speak to the importance of that academic hub and the need to move forward with offering those kinds of educational opportunities for our young people, not just here in Hagerstown, but for all of Washington County. Also, last Thursday was a chamber event celebrating the 10 years of University System of Maryland at Hagerstown. It's hard to believe that that place has been in operation for 10 years, but it's been great to see the growth, and it's wonderful to be a part of the planning for future growth and how the city will mutually benefit along with the university because of that growth. I attended the Arts Council Art of Cooking event on Saturday, representing the city of Hagerstown. It was a great event. The first time I'd been able to attend that event, but it was from all, from everything I could tell, it was a pretty successful event, and wish the Arts Council well in their mission. And on Sunday, the Free Clinic had a fundraiser at The Goat. It's sort of fundraising circuit season, but I also think that, once again, the guys at The Goat pulled off a very successful fundraiser for the community free clinic, which continues to see many, many more patients this year than they had the previous year, and continue to experience that growth, which is not necessarily a good thing. But also today, just earlier, the chief, John Liston, our Community Economic Development Director, the city administrator, and I met with a representative from CSX to continue the conversation about how CSX can be a better corporate citizen, to be a part of the solution to some of the criminal activity that's occurring on their property throughout the city, and working on ways to move forward to find solutions to these persistent problems. So we look forward to that ongoing partnership with CSX as we continue to work with other agencies and groups to find ways to solve the problems there. And with that, does anyone else have any comments? With that, we'll move on to the minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for the approval of the minutes as presented for the mayor and council meeting held on November, meetings held on November 4th, 18th, 25th, December 2nd, 9th, and December 16th, 2014.
Motion by Mr. Munson and a second by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move the consent agenda to be approved as presented.
Second.
Motion and second. I would, for discussion, like to just point out, and maybe you can amend your motion accordingly, but a couple of items, the dates have changed.
Right.
So for the street closure requests for 2015.
It's Porch Fest and...
The Crumpies Donut Alley Run is Friday, August 14th, and the Porch Fest is tentatively scheduled for September 12th. So I just wanted to point that out for the record before the consent agenda is approved. Motion by Mr. Alshire, seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Consent agenda is approved. Under unfinished business, item A is the approval of an ordinance amending the city code by adding Chapter 183, nuisance unattended donation containers.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move, mayor and city council adopt an ordinance to add Chapter 183, nuisance unattended donation containers to the code of the city of Hagerstown. This code amendment will prohibit the use and maintenance of unattended donation containers in the city as a means of protecting our neighborhoods from the nuisance conditions associated with such containers. This amendment to the city code will have an effective date of July 1st, 2015.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion?
Yes, I'd just like to make sure, I believe in work session, we discussed reaching out to the properties where this is impacting, well before this July 1st date. Gives them plenty of time, but we also need, you know, to give them good notice of what this is and a chance to ask us questions and so forth. So make sure that happens.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion made by Mr. Metzner and seconded by Mr. Munson, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. The next item, approval of an ordinance amending Chapter 216, streets and sidewalks of the city code to add provisions for private use of public sidewalks.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move, the mayor and city council adopt an ordinance to amend Chapter 216, streets and sidewalks of the code of the city of Hagerstown. This code amendment is intended to protect the livability, quality of life, and image of our community by placing controls on private use of public sidewalks for certain commercial activity. A new Article 8, private use of public sidewalks, will be added to Chapter 216 that includes standards and restrictions for merchandise displays, sidewalk cafes, yard sales, and encroachment of structures and objects in the public right of way.
Motion made by Mr. Alshire. I'm going to go with Ms. Nye because I heard her voice first for the second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Eyes have it, and the ordinance is adopted. Onto new business, the introduction of an ordinance to 2015 general obligation bond issue.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move to introduce an enabling ordinance authorizing city of Hagerstown to issue and sell upon its full faith and credit general obligation bonds in one or more series in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $9,874,343. Proceeds from the sale of the bonds will be used to pay costs of the projects identified in the ordinance. Proceeds are allocated by fund as follows. General Fund, $3,923,743. Electric Fund, $650,000. Water Fund, $3,260,600. Wastewater Fund, $1,940,000. Property Management Fund, $100,000. Again, the aggregate total, $9,874,343. That portion of principal interest and cost of issuance allocated to projects associated with the electric fund, water fund, wastewater fund, and property management fund shall be payable in the first instance from revenues accounted for in those respective funds. Staff is hereby directed to proceed in working with the city's financial advisor and bond council to determine the best financing options for the city and to develop the necessary detailed resolutions and other documents required to prepare for the sale of the bonds as directed by this ordinance. As specified in the ordinance, details and authorizations regarding the amount, timing, method of sale or sales, and other sale details will be outlined in a detailed resolution to be presented to this body for approval at a future date prior to the issuance of the bonds. The ordinance also authorizes the issuance of bond anticipation notes to fund project costs on an interim basis and refunding bonds in the event either is determined to be necessary by the mayor and council.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Brubaker and seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion?
Just a note, while I don't think it is relevant, in my personal place of employment, we use, I believe, the same bond council for past bond issuances. So I just wanted to disclose that.
And just for everybody's information, we're introducing this ordinance tonight. We're planning to pass it on February 10th, and it will be effective on March 13th. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item B, the introduction of an ordinance, contract acquisition for 806 to 808 West Washington Street. And once again, this is an introduction of the ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for the approval of an ordinance for the acquisition of 806 to 808 West Washington Street for the creation of a public park and open, or open space. Property is being donated to the city by the owner in as-is condition, and the city has 120-day feasible period to study any encumbrances on the property prior to the actual closing.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Munson and seconded by Mr. Brubaker. Any discussion?
Just a note, as a kid that grew up on Concord Street for a good bit of my early childhood, I think it's important in this approval to let folks know where this property is, because everybody that lives in the city or around the city is driven by it one time or another. It is what some folks would know as the old Key Market, the old West End Market that burned down long ago, and is now a vacant property that has been vacant and in a degrading state for a long number of years. And I would just like to say thanks to the property owner for coming forward, making this donation, because I think any improvement to that lot is an improvement to that community.
And staff have already planned on reaching out to the community to get their input on the future use of this property as well.
And Mr. Mayor, if I could, just to clarify the dates, tonight, we're introducing the ordinance, as you mentioned. On the dates on your motion sheet, it should show the date of passage as February 10th, with the effective date of March 13th. So some corrections to those dates will actually approve and adopt the ordinance on February 10th.
Could you repeat this, please?
The date of passage for the approval of the ordinance will be February 10th, and the effective date will be March 13th. So we're introducing the ordinance this evening.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item C, under new business, is the approval of a resolution, supplement to covenants for maintenance of Terps Boulevard medians.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for approval of a resolution to authorize execution of the supplemental declaration with Collegiate Acres LLC for the turf and landscape maintenance of the medians in Terps Boulevard. This agreement requires them to mow the medians in lieu of the city or the HOA for the homes west of Terps Boulevard.
Motion and second. Any discussion?
If I could, Mr. Mayor, and I want to hold this up and maybe stack him with that and just straighten out, but on page two of the declaration, under Section E, the last sentence, I believe somebody didn't do something right. I don't know what the last sentence means.
Are you talking about removal of any landscaping features deemed in violation of any applicable city ordinance shall be removed or trimmed at declarant sole expense?
Yeah, and I don't think we have to hold up a vote. I think that language can be cleaned up to reflect whatever it's supposed to mean.
Duly noted. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion made by, who made that motion? I'm sorry. I think Dot.
Councilmember Brubaker.
Oh. Brubaker?
Brubaker, and then seconded by...
Metzner.
Councilmember Metzner.
Thank you. I didn't write it down. Thank you. Motion made by Mr. Brubaker, seconded by Mr. Metzner. If there's no other discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item D is the approval of management services for Potterfield Pool with Community Pool Services of Rockville, Maryland.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move to approve a three-year contract for pool management services at Potterfield Pool with Community Pool Service of Rockville, Maryland, beginning with the 2015 pool season. Contract provides for all lifeguards, cleaning, and assisting city staff with aquatic programs.
Any discussion? On the motion made by Mr. Alshire and seconded by Mr. Metzner, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Item E, the approval of a memorandum of understanding with Mitsubishi Heavy Industries and Customized Energy Solutions.
Mayor, hereby move, mayor and city council approve the attached memorandum of understanding with Mitsubishi Heavy Industries and Customized Energy Solutions. The MOU details the responsibilities of each entity in the development of a proposed energy storage system and allows for the termination of the MOU by either of the parties during the term of the MOU. If the project is deemed feasible and all parties agree to all terms and provisions within a developed lease agreement, no RFP will be required.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Brubaker, seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion?
Yes, Mayor, I just want to make a comment. This is, this is pretty big stuff. This is, this is technology in a, in a big way. And in some respects, this is going to put Hagerstown on the map. And Mitsubishi, which is normally, I believe, a west coast operation, is, in coming to Hagerstown, will establish, as I understand this, a presence on the east coast for the first time. And so perhaps in the future, when people are looking at a place to advance their technology, maybe they'll take a look at this and think about Hagerstown, Maryland.
Light a big flashlight.
What's the term? What's that?
Light a big flashlight.
Light a big flashlight?
I do think this is great work on the part of staff to use public facility and use property we already have and next to a substation for some pretty cutting-edge technology that we hope will put Hagerstown on the map. So thanks again to staff for putting this together, and I hope that the news media picks up on it and toots our horn about what a great project this will be for the city and for everybody who is part of the grid.
Well, besides all that, hopefully, it'll bring down the rates eventually. That's good, you know, that's good of the substance. This, besides cutting edge, will hopefully benefit our ratepayers.
Mayor, could I make one other comment?
Please.
That needs to be pointed out. You know, when the melt plant was built, that was cutting-edge technology. And now, it's coming down, thanks to this mayor and council, and all the hard work that this mayor and council has put into it. It's coming down, as it rightly should, but it's being replaced with cutting-edge technology. And I think that's an interesting sort of thing and needed to be said. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Clarification from legal counsel. The term, if I read it correctly, that's two years, right? I mean, it's basically at the MOU, if the parties can't get the lease process accomplished within a two-year period, then...
It's a maximum for two years or earlier.
Or earlier. If one of the parties...
Withdrawals, where they find a site and they're ready to negotiate a contract.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other discussion? On the motion made by Mr. Brubaker, seconded by Mr. Metzner, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Eyes have it, and the motion carries. Item F, approval of inductees to the Hagerstown Circle of Achievement and Memorial Park, and approval of a date for unveiling the Circle of Achievement and grand opening of Memorial Park.
Mr. Mayor, based upon the recommendation forwarded to the mayor and council by the Circle of Achievement Inductee Review Committee pursuant to compliance with criteria for candidacy established by the mayor and council on May 27, 2014, I move that the following persons be inducted for the inaugural class of 2015 to the Hagerstown Circle of Achievement at Memorial Park. Listed alphabetically, they are Henry "Kid" Douglas, Jesse Duncan Elliott, Jonathan Hager, William Thomas Hamilton, Thomas Kennedy, William Preston Lane Jr., Edward Mayberry Mobley, Mathias Peter Muller, Anna Bruce Singer, Mary Lemest Titcomb, Jacob Francis Wheaton, William Othello Wilson, with the thanks of a grateful city. I further move that the Circle of Achievement be unveiled and Memorial Park be officially opened with appropriate ceremony on Saturday, May 16, 2015, and the future ceremonies for the induction of new honorees in the Circle of Achievement shall occur during the weekend before Memorial Day, weekend each May, unless altered by the mayor and council.
Second.
At the motion and the second, any discussion?
Two comments. The first is, while I, while I'm not going to vote against it, I still disappointed that Mayor Burhan's name is not in the initial inductee group, even with that expanded group. And the second is one of the actual park design itself. There are these diamond-shaped... Uh, there are these diamond-shaped, uh, uh, inlays in the middle of the path, and with any, uh, moisture content on them, they are as slick as you can imagine. I mean, they're like stepping onto an ice skating rink, so, and that, not as snow, but I mean, that's any wetness, and they're sort of right in the middle. While they're well-intended and look great, uh, they're definitely a, a slipping hazard, so just wanted to point that out.
I appreciate that, and I'm thinking, maybe with all the comments you made about Mr. Burhan's, maybe he will be at the top of next year's list.
That'd be good.
I do agree that he certainly belongs in the Circle of Achievement. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. Thank you. Item F, the approval of an, uh, I'm sorry, we just did that. Item G, approval of revised standards for induction to the Circle of Achievement at Memorial Park.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move to authorize the approval of revised standards for induction into the Circle of Achievement at Memorial Park. The revisions are recommended by the selection committee based on their work establishing a list of potential candidates. The standards will be used by the committee to provide future nominations for mayor and council approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. Thank you. Item H, the approval of the Hagerstown Suns fireworks scheduled for 2015.
Mayor, hereby move, mayor and council approve 10 fireworks shows after Hagerstown Suns baseball games during the 2015 season. The mayor and council's approval will exempt these 10 shows from the city of Hagerstown's noise ordinance under Section 155-5 of the code of the city of Hagerstown.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Brubaker and seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item I, the approval of an amendment to City Center Residency Initiative Program, addition of Hagerstown Community College students as eligible applicants.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move, the mayor and council to approve the addition of the following eligible applicant categories to the City Center Residency Initiative Program. Full-time HCC students enrolled in a degree-seeking program, minimum of 12 credit hours per semester. Halftime HCC students enrolled in a degree-seeking program who concurrently maintain full-time employment, minimum of six credit hours per semester. The addition of these applicant categories to the City Center Residency Initiative will strengthen the existing program and create a partnership between the city of Hagerstown and HCC.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Alshire, seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion?
Ms. Nye.
Ms. Nye.
We tied.
Any discussion? Great work by staff, that's all I have to say. Any, uh, I'm sorry, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. And the last item, approval of standards and conditions for sidewalk business license.
I hereby move that the mayor and city council adopt the attached standards and conditions for issuance of sidewalk business licenses to implement new code provisions for private use of public sidewalks in Chapter 216 Streets and Sidewalks as previously adopted by the ordinance on this date.
Second.
Any discussion? Motion made by Mr. Alshire, seconded by Ms. Nye. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Thank you very much. We are adjourned.